Good morning, we now call this council meeting to order. We do ask if you have a cellphone at this time, if you would put it on silent, mute, or off. It greatly appreciated. This time will be led in prayer by Madam Clerk followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk.
Oh God of might, wisdom, and justice, through whom authority is rightly administered, laws enacted and judgment decreed, assist us, we beseech thee, that this city council may be conducted in righteousness and be eminently useful to thy people over whom we reside. Reside, I'm sorry. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the reasonable and just states, one nation under God, indivisible,天地无边, just as it is for all.
Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams. Morgan.
Present.
West.
Present.
Mayor Kirkland.
Present. Move for the approval of the minutes.
So moved.
A second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes. At this time, we open up the microphone for public comments on agenda items only. If you have public comments on the agenda items, we ask that you go to the podium, state your name, and your comments, concern. Here in the scene, then. Madam Clerk.
Resolution, whereas the following individuals have requested a handicap parking zone. Number one, Brenda Gibson, eleven thirty Clover Lane, Chester, PA, one nine oh one three. Number two, Charles Johnson, three twenty-five East Twentieth Street, Chester, PA, one nine zero one three. Number three, Diana McDaniel, thirty fifteen West Ninth Street, Chester, PA, one nine oh one three. Number four, Diana Mobley, twenty East Sixteenth Street, Chester, PA, one nine oh one three. And number five, Gebdil Pazario, nine fifteen Hyatt Street, Chester, PA, one nine oh one three. Whereas after a thorough investigation by the Department of Public Works, it has been determined the aforementioned individuals have met all of the required criteria and have a need for said handicap parking zone. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the proper city officials to install a handicap parking zone in the eleven hundred block of Clover Lane, in the three hundred block of East Twentieth Street, in the three thousand block of West Ninth Street, in the unit block of East Sixteenth Street, and in the nine hundred block of Hyatt Street in the City of Chester.
So moved.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams. Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the proper city official to prepare the advertisement of notice accepting application for the Associate Project Manager position within the City of Chester. Further, that it does hereby authorize the city clerk and other city officials to advertise said notice in the Help Wanted section of the Delaware County Daily Times, the Designated Employment Boards, and to post said notice on the City of Chester website.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
I have one. I'm not exactly sure of this position, and I apologize, I wasn't at deliberative on Monday. There any insight on it?
Which, which?
Second.
What about, what about?
Any, could you?
Chief, please. Thank you.
My apologies, I, I think it was just added on, um, just yesterday. It shouldn't have been, actually, I wanted to push it to the next meeting. But what it is, is the part-time position that we discussed with, uh, Ms. Dixon, staying on to help out with some of the final projects that she's working on, and that's why it's going to a part-time position. That's what that is.
Thank you. A second. Are there any more further questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that in accordance with the recommendations of the Chester City Planning Commission, dated May eleventh, twenty twenty-two, and reviewed by the Delaware County Planning Commission on May nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, it does hereby grant final approval to U.S. Supply Company to construct a two thousand nine hundred and four square foot, one-story storage building located at thirteen oh one Morton Avenue, Chester, PA, one nine oh one three, as shown on a plan prepared by H. Gilroy Damon Associates, Inc., thirteen forty-three Chester Pike Sharon Hill, PA, one nine zero seven nine, dated March twenty-two, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that in accordance with the recommendations of the Chester City Planning Commission dated October twelfth, twenty twenty-two, and reviewed by the Delaware County Planning Commission on October twentieth, twenty twenty-two, it does hereby grant final approval to Michael Gilhall, Senior, American Wood Design, to reverse subdivide eleven lots into one lot and construct a fourteen thousand two hundred and sixty-five square foot warehouse with adjacent parking at four oh six to four twenty-four West Second Street, Chester, PA, one nine zero one three, as shown on a plan prepared by Catania Engineering Associates, Inc., five twenty West McDade Boulevard, Millmount Park, PA, one nine zero three three, dated August seventeenth, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby ratify the submission of an application to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, PCCD, for the COVID CFR Local Law Enforcement Support Grant for the sum of two million nine hundred forty-two thousand four hundred twenty-seven dollars, which will be used for the purchase of modern techn- technological, technological hardware to ensure that personnel has the means to protect themselves and properly investigate criminal acts for the benefit of the city and its residents. Further, that it does hereby ratify the execution of all documents necessary for the submission of said grant application for and on behalf of the City of Chester.
So moved.
A second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, whereas the Stormwater Authority of the City of Chester, here and after referred to as SWA, is proposing to construct a regional stormwater management basin at Veterans Memorial Park, located at Seventh and Engle Streets within, within the City of Chester to prevent flooding in the Veterans Memorial Park area and elevate the long-time flooding, I'm sorry, alleviate the long-time flooding problem for residents in that area. And whereas, the city agrees that flooding is a problem in this area and would like to support the SWA-proposed project. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby approve the development of a stormwater basin and park improvements within Veterans Memorial Park by the Stormwater Authority of the City of Chester, subject to all of the conditions outlined by the city engineer, planner, and solicitor as follows. Number one, the SWA shall comply with all land development requirements and ordinances set forth by the city, county, state, and federal government in the development and construction of the project. Number two, the SWA must enter into an easement and/or subdivision and land development agreement with the city pursuant to which, number one, the city will grant an easement and/or subdivision at the city's discretion to SWA for the purpose of constructing and maintaining said basin and all site improvements. The SWA shall conduct a title search of said property to ensure there are no restricting covenants on the property. Number two, SWA will assume the obligation of maintaining the stormwater basin and all improvements and identify the city of all risks and liability related to such improvements during construction of the project and for the life of the improvements pursuant to an, to an agreement satisfactory to the solicitor and city. And number three, SWA will add the city as an, as an additional insured, both during construction of the project and for the life of the project, an amount that is satisfactory to the solicitor and the city. Number three, it is understood that all improvements that are completed as part of this project will be the sole ownership of SW, of the SWA in terms of construction, maintenance, and repairs. Furthermore, the City of Chester is not accepting dedication of any improvements which will be further defined once an easement slash subdivision plan is recorded. Any easement subdivision areas shall be clearly delineated in the field and a means acceptable to the city to define maintenance obligations and all costs to be borne by SWA. Number four, the SWA shall move said basin and improvements to the southwest of the suggested location in accordance with the needed land space east of the improvements for future development. Number five, that pursuant to Section nine two one point oh two of the codified ordinances of the City of Chester, said land shall be laid out, improved, and maintained forever as a public park for the use, benefit, and enjoyment of the inhabitants of the city, and that the land is subject to the Public Trust Tidling and Disposition Law, fifty-three PS, Section thirty-three eighty-one, the Public Trust Law. Number six, the SWA shall obtain all necessary building, road opening, sidewalk, and curb permits from the City of Chester, Public Works Department, County, and State. Number seven, SWA shall pay all costs incurred by it or the city in conjunction with the development of the basin, including but not limited to legal, planning, engineering, and inspection expenses, review of construction plans and documents, title searches, subdivision and land, and development fees, and any and all other costs, fees, expenses pertaining to the development, construction, and maintenance of the basin.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? I have one, um, deliberative on Monday, unfortunately, I wasn't here, as I mentioned before. But were there, I know there were some questions, comments, and/or concerns. Did all members of council raise any questions, comments, or concerns to speak up regarding at the deliberative?
Yes.
Yes. Everyone?
They were addressed.
Okay.
I don't think everyone did.
Everyone did not?
No.
Everyone did not.
Okay.
Okay.
But questions were asked, and answers were provided, but not everybody spoke up, as far as members of council, okay? That's our line.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, I just want to say this. These are, these, um, regulations are, or, or desires that have been put forth. The Stormwater Authority has been doing this, this since the inception, since their very inception. And so now, we are putting these rules and regulations in place, something they've already been doing. Uh, and I appreciate the work that they do and continue to do. And we look forward to this being an addition to our community and to our park and, and, and making our parks and our waterways safer here in the City of Chester. And we will make sure that any authority that comes before this council will have to go through the same thing, these same rules, and these same regulations guaranteed. Call, roll, call to vote.
Counselors Williams. Morgan.
Yes.
West. Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby approve the First Amendment to the scope of work included in the Master Services Agreement between the City of Chester and Protivity Government Services, Inc., amending Section Three entitled Name of Project, Audit Readiness Support, and Additional Accounting Resource Support by providing additional personnel and services until March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, as further outlined in the amended dated September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. Further, that it does hereby ratify the execution of said amendment for the engagement of services for and on behalf of the city.
So moved.
I second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does approve and order payment of a series of bills and refunds as prepared by the Department of Accounts and Finance and is shown on expenditure approval list for the period of October eighth, twenty twenty-two, through October twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, attached hereto and made a part hereof, subject to approval from the Department of Accounts and Finance.
So moved.
A second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
At this time, we all have, um, our COVID update, Ms. King, or Ms. King and...
Good morning.
Good morning.
The Pennsylvan, excuse me. The Pennsylvania Department of Health reports that there have been eighty-six positive COVID-nineteen cases in October so far in Chester. Research experts believe that the number of positive cases is undercounted, given the common use of at-home tests. The CDC also reported twenty-five cases of monkeypox in the state of Pennsylvania since the last council meeting on October twelfth. Delaware County is also currently experiencing a medium level of COVID-nineteen transmission. According to the CDC, people may choose to mask at any time. Those at high risk for severe illness, those with symptoms, a positive test, or exposure to someone with COVID-nineteen should continue wearing a mask. As of October fourteenth, the Delaware County Health Department started offering the Novavax vaccine. Novavax is a good option for anyone who has felt reluctant to be vaccinated using Pfizer or Moderna. While the technology used for Pfizer and Moderna has been proven to be safe and effective, the technology used for Novavax is a more traditional and protein-based vaccine. COVID-nineteen vaccinations and boosters will be available on November seventh from eleven AM to five PM at the Delaware County Health Center, located at one five one West Fifth Street. Walk-ins are offered, but you are encouraged to schedule an appointment by calling four eight four two seven six two one zero zero. You can also always go to vaccines dot go for the most up-to-date appointment availability for vaccines and boosters. The Chester City Health Department attended the Lead Poisoning Prevention Coalition Meeting at Widener University on October twenty-fifth, along with the Delaware County Health Department and the Pennsylvania Department of Health. Also, Keystone First will be having a vaccine and booster shot clinic on October twenty-eighth from ten AM to two PM at one nine two nine West Ninth Street. To make an appointment, you can call four eight four two seven six two one zero zero. On November tenth, the Health Department will be partnering with the Department of Parks and Recreation to host a Veterans Day luncheon at Chester City Hall, in the Chester City Hall Community Room, from twelve to three. Lastly, if anyone needs COVID-nineteen test kits, they are available on the tables downstairs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. And we want to make sure that, we hope that folks are still, uh, taking care of themselves, making sure that they get their vaccine, vaccinations, and their boosters. Uh, COVID is still here with us. We're doing better, but we can do better. So thank you, Ms. King, and thank you, Ms. Carter. Ms. Beaver.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Um, my complaint is dumping grounds on Sadique property now. It's, it's happening during after-hours, during nighttime. People, I took pictures this morning. They put in mattresses, sofas, love seeds, and everything out on his property. One is beyond the bus stop on Nathan Butler, and the mattress and stuff is inside the dumpster area where he used to have. And I did reach out to him, and I did give him Councilor Al West's number. But she says she hasn't heard from him, so something need to be done. Too many mice and rats and stuff in the area.
Carla, when you and I talked, um, a couple of months ago, and I, the guys went up, at that time, he didn't have a dumpster.
Right.
And he did get a dumpster?
No, actually, Sadique is not open right now. He's not open back up until March.
Okay.
So they're using his property as a dumping ground.
Okay, so that's illegal dumping. I'll talk to my staff about that. And get also with, um, L and I.
I mean, because I have cameras, and my camera just not picking up.
Yeah, who's, who's doing it?
Because it's happened in late nights.
Okay.
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 All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beaver.
You're welcome.
Um, Ms. Mayfield.
Good morning, um, I have a couple of issues, but before I start, I just want to say something, um. Coming here and witnessing, you know, some of the comments that people make to the council, and these are concerns of residents. And, you know, a huge observation that I've made is that many times when people are at the podium speaking, you have, um, city employees that are sitting in the audience that are making comments. And I think that it is absolutely disrespectful. And I think that irregardless of whether or not you like what is said, that as a city employee, you should have a certain amount of respect for residents when they come here to address council. So I would request that that really stops. Um, everybody should be treated with respect. And that's what I wanted to say on that. And as far as the locally elected officials, mayor and city council members, I think that one thing that residents have to understand it, the City of Chester is a business. Everything you do should be for the well-being of the residents and the governance of policies and things that help and improve our lives. And I think it should be done with, you know, a certain amount of expertise, a certain amount of always having residents issues in the forefront. And I think that recently, you know, I don't know when it happened, but there have been some issues with money. Um, and I just want to ask, you know, a little while ago, there was a subject of maybe a fine that the IRS was going to levy against the residents of the City of Chester. Because the government has no money. All the money they get, it comes from the residents. And I haven't heard anything about this for months and months now, that we could potentially be hit with a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar fine. Council is not talking about it. Recently, it was in the paper that there is a four hundred thousand dollar payment that was made, and council has not addressed it. I think that the residents need to know. How that, how that happened? Who authorized it? Because I know certain levels of payable have different levels of authorization. And how could a payment of four hundred thousand dollars go out and go to the wrong place? You know, I, I, I just, working in accounts and doing accounts payable and having an accounting background, I, I can't conceive it. But I think at the very least, council needs to address it for the residents. There has been no conversation as to where the city stands, the local elected officials, what they are doing to stave off a bankruptcy, and/or how do you guide the residents if the city goes bankrupt? There is no conversation on that. And I think that it is...
Thank you, Ms. Mayfield. We, we can address that right now. Thank you. And, um, there is a three-minute limit, so...
Oh, I'm, I'm, I was waiting for a response.
So we'll, we'll address that right now.
Um, so on the IRS issue, um, you're accurate, we, uh, I think put this information out, uh, sometime last year about March or April, uh, that the City of Chester has a, uh, a liability, a financial liability with IRS of roughly about seven hundred thousand dollars. Majority of that is due to penalties and interest. Um, there are some filings that were, I guess, uh, that were, there were things filed, uh, with the IRS, but the, the data that was filed was not matching up, uh, to what was being reported, um, as far as payroll, um, in the years, uh, between like twenty sixteen and twenty eighteen, or twenty sixteen and twenty nineteen, so. Um, we currently are working, um, with IRS and with the internal team financially to, uh, rectify the situation. Uh, one of the resolutions on the agenda today was an extension of financial support with Protivity. Uh, Protivity is an agency that's in here that has brought, and some, um, accountants, uh, offered a little, some more man and woman power to the finance department so that we can become current, uh, with, not just with our financial audits, but also so that we can rectify this IRS issue, so. Uh, we have until, uh, roughly about the, the end of the first quarter of twenty twenty-three, uh, to, to rectify the issue, and we are progressing and doing so in that. Uh, as far as the phishing email, this is our first council meeting since, uh, the press release was released. Uh, so we really haven't had, uh, an opportunity outside of today and the MFRAC meeting, which was yesterday, to, to try to address it. Um, there was an issue, as many of us know, that these scammers or phishing emails and things like that, that happens, whether it's via email, phone call, or text messages are real. Unfortunately, we were, uh, a victim of that. Um, I as well was on those emails, uh, as they were, as they were coming in, uh, for us to submit wires to uh, individuals posing as our insurance carrier for work... Uh, individuals posing as our insurance carrier for workers' compensation. And of course, everything looked very identical. Uh, everything was very typical and usual as far as our broker. Uh, reaching out to the city of Chester and the finance department uh, requesting for payment, so. Uh, we actually have a meeting today uh, with the receiver and their team to discuss it a little bit more in depth. Uh, the finance department team has met uh, over the last uh, few hours and days uh, to discuss the issue. And to look at the next steps of what we're going to do to make sure that we avoid and or limit these types of things that are happening. Um, just to so you know, a few things that we are going to do is, of course, and look at our internal internal controls. Add some different parameters around that about how wires go out, how transfers are happening and about money that's incoming and outgoing. Uh, we'll go we'll be speaking with the bank as well. Um, and we'll also make sure we have the proper policies uh, in place so that if this does happen in the future, such as a cyber policy. That we hopefully can uh, be able to put claims uh, against that policy. So there are a few things that we're looking at. Uh, uh, again, I think that we are moving in the right direction to to avoid and limit this, but. I do know that this is happening all across the country and unfortunately, some of this is in our right in our backyard as well, so.
And as uh, thank you. And as far as um. Uh, our employees and being respectful or making comments when others are speaking. Um, respect goes both ways. There are times when other persons, I myself and council may be speaking. And other persons may be making comments as well, so let us be reminded that respect goes both ways. And finally, we want to make sure that um, we can. Help our budget and build our build our budget here at the city. And so we're going to be looking at those persons who have been delinquent in their taxes. Especially when the seniors have been paying their taxes on a regular basis. We want to we're going to start a deeper dive into those individuals who claim that property in the city. And who have been delinquent on their taxes. We're going to find out why they're delinquent on their taxes, and we're going to start talking about that as well. Thank you, Dr. Strand.
Mayor Council, on behalf of the Chester Stormwater Authority, just would like to thank the city.
Doctor Strand, could you speak more into the microphone?
Okay. Sorry about that. On behalf of the Stormwater Authority of the City of Chester, we'd like to thank the mayor and council for the support you've given. And the work that we are set out to do to uh, be diligent with the assignment that was given to us. Over six years ago by mayor and council. When the federal government's put out a mandate that all communities close to waterways come over come. And to deal with the flooding and reduce uh, the poison that go into Delaware River. You established the Stormwater Authority of the City of Chester. And for the past six years, we've been working diligently to do what we've been mandated to do. In a neighborhood of almost fifty million dollars, which has been put into the streets of our Chester to. Deal with integrated systems, inlets that were caving in. And uh, to divert some of the water away from the combined sewer system. And to reduce the 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 tragic situation that some of our residents have been dealing with for a number of years. I'm thankful for the engineers that have been working with us. And also for some of our staff and our Chester residents that have been employed here on a daily basis. Uh, with backcoms, with uh, street sweeping. Uh, we just purchased a new street sweeper to add to the one that we already have. Because we found that keeping the streets clean is essential to Stormwater management. If you look on two ninety one, you will see that two ninety one has been remarkably uh, clean on a daily basis when people come in our Chester. They come into a thorough way that is uh, clean. The day I have with me uh, some of our employees, but also I have about six apprentices. That the Stormwater Authority has uh, supported. To train and job readiness and also green infrastructure and learn about the our apprentices here. Could could they stand, please? I want just want the mayor to see, these are young people. Mayor, that that the residents of this city is providing uh, income to on a that a daily basis. They work less than thirty hours a week. Uh, they make four hundred and fifty dollars a week and they're being trained for job readiness and. Uh, some of them are going to be in demanding positions once uh, they have completed their task at the end about December. Uh, this has been supported solely by the Stormwater Authority and some other initiatives, but. Mainly uh, the Stormwater Authority as it has committed to uh, reach out to our community and to help our youth. So I just wanted you to meet some now, Mr. Doctor Holden is. One of the field representatives, works for them directly along with a few other members of our staff. And um, this with the mayor to know that and. So we we thank you, mayor and council, uh, because. We have some flyers that we put out that cover some of the work that's been done already in the city of Chester. And uh, we're here to serve the city and we we serve at the. Requests and direction of the mayor and council who has established authority. And we're appreciative for all the help that we've gotten from the federal government and the state. And uh, we thank God for the help even from the uh, the the other entities that are working with us, Corvus and HDR. And um, we were thankful even for the receivers office who we've been in contact with. Who has a clear understanding of the work that we're doing. And uh, I think that this is something that. The mayor and council should be proud of because you established this authority and you entrusted us to do this job. And we're doing it uh, at your uh, direction and 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 we hope that you're proud of what you have accomplished. In the midst of all the other things, we can say Chester is clean. Uh, the job that we're going to be doing in Memorial Park will provide almost fifty. Jobs for Chester residents for two years at uh, sustainable wages, union jobs. We work closely with our contractors, we're closely with our local union.
Doc- Doctor Strand?
Yes, sir.
I don't.
Time's up?
Yes, I don't.
Okay, now, all right. Thank you, mayor, for this time, but I just want you to know that, you know, we're here to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Doc. Councilwoman, you have any comments?
Morning.
Morning.
I'd like to uh, make this a announcement to all. Family dwelling owner, property owners that own property here in the city of Chester. Your inspections are due. And we need you to call in, get an appointment. And get your property inspected because right now they're out of compliance. Thank you very much and have a great day.
Um, again, I just like um, the community to be mindful of your recycling, um. We we need to be diligent when we're recycling and I see more and more as I ride around the city. That people are adhering to um, the recycling efforts here in the city of Chester. Um, I'd like to thank the um. Um, mayor and council for your support as we uh, from the uh, police perspective. Um, as we go about through the city to look at those um, illegal dump sites. Uh, I've, you know, solicited support from the police and my staff in the streets department. Uh, Mr. Um, Alexander and Mr. Robertson and our staff. I'd just like to thank you for your diligence as we go about to try to clean up the city. It's not perfect because. My staff can go in and clean one night. And the very next day, there's trash out again in that very same place. So I'm asking the residents to, just like Ms. Beaver. You know, to be diligent, let us know when you see things and then if you see someone illegally dumping, I'm not asking you to go out. And approach those perpetrators, but I'm asking you if you get get a color and make a model of the car. If you can get a a a license plate without putting yourself in danger. I would appreciate it so we could turn it over to our Commissioner Gretzky. We need to do this together. We all need to work together to keep our city clean. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Council.
Really quick updates too, um, first off, uh, I just want to give a shout out to all of the. Uh, I guess the classes and alumni for the Chester High hu- hu- high school homecoming this past weekend. Um, it's always a phenomenal phenomenal outing, jam packed parking lot. Uh, it's a big family reunion for the city of Chester, so. Um, I did not go to Chester High, but I think most of you know I still represent C pride to the fullest, so. Uh, but it was also, it was it was phenomenal to be out there and uh, the football team won, so continue to support those young student athletes. Um, I think they got one more regular season game left, I believe, and then they're headed to the playoffs. They need your everybody's support in the city of Chester, so uh, don't just show up for homecoming. Make sure that you all continue to go out there, support. Pay your pay your admissions at the at the front gate, don't try to hop the fence. Um, and of course, make sure you buy some some food at the concession stands because it all goes back to those those uh, student athletes. Um, American Rescue Plan. Uh, we had a meeting about a week or two ago about them with the American Rescue Plan. We're going to continue to try to provide some updates. Uh, one thing that we are going to do to bring the community uh, more involved with what we are doing. As far as the spending and the projects that we have going on is uh, we'll be uh, we're establishing a uh, oversight committee. Um, that will consist of some of the members uh, from the community, so if you have any interest. Of being on that oversight committee, uh, please reach out to Michael Hurst. Uh, via email at M Hurst, that's M H U R S T at ChesterCity.com. Uh, let him know of your interest and he will respond with an email and and some documentation that may need to be filled out, so. Again, reach out to Michael Hurst, um, if you have interest of joining the oversight committee and you can also stay up to date. Uh, with things that we have going on with the American Rescue Plan on our website at ChesterCity.com.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, Comish, you want to talk about trunk or treat?
First thing I'll address is the comment by uh, Ms. Beaver and as Councilor West says, this is a team effort. Um, police does one side, public works, um. You know, many people have my personal cell phone number, but like I said, we will work on this. I will get with the patrol division. We're going to put hourly hour checks. Out there. You know how to get ahold of me. You know that. Um, also Sunday, trunk or treat. This is the fifth year I'll be doing it. Um, it's more than a trunk or treat. We got moon bounces, we got water ice, I got a DJ. Please spread the word and bring everyone out. Transparency, come out, meet my officers from the police department and have a good time.
We'll be there.
I hope so. Oh, police station, I'm sorry. It's on our social media, one sixty uh, East Seventh Street. We use the side of the uh. Field there and then we're going to block uh, Seventh Street for temporary, but each year it gets bigger and bigger, so please come out and support. Thank you.
Um, I also like to thank um, mayor and Commissioner Gretzky and our partners, um, Jack Stolsteimer. Josh Shapiro, Mary Kay Scanlon, those who have participated in reducing the crime in Chester. It is much more comfortable here in the city of Chester than it had been. And our crime rate is down, so I think that's commendable. I want to thank you as a resident and a member of this team.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Um, let me just back up just a little bit and and address the question about bankruptcy. Um, I know bankruptcy has been placed on the table uh, a number of times uh, by the receiver. Um, keeps mentioning the possibility of bankruptcy. Uh, I do want you to understand something. We went to court, city went to court. And we would not say or do anything until the courts made a decision. The courts found that the city owns, owns the Chester Water Authority. Now, it continues to be in court. If we have such an asset in our community. That is worth approximately a half a billion dollars. If your house is on fire and the fire company is next door to your house. And it does not put the water on your house, your house burns down. We have a half billion dollar asset here in this community. And we have the right, we will have the right as we go through courts. If it means selling the water authority to save our community and our people. So be it. I want to make sure there's a future for your grandkids and your great grandkids and your great great grandkids as well as mine. So that's the answer to that. And then what you do with that money is you make sure that money is. Used properly. You don't go out and just say, here, we have a half billion dollars. Let's go spend, 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 spend. No, you make sure you invest properly, you make sure you save properly. You make sure you spend properly. You put proper persons in place to make sure that that money. Last generation after generation. You don't just willy nilly go out there and spend that money. So that's my answer to that. Um, I do want to say to Stormwater. Thank you for the partnership. You know, I I remember when we first, when it was first came about, the Stormwater Authority first came about, everybody ridiculed. Said this and that and they had to pay a bill, but you see these young men and ladies. From this community. Working on your behalf every day. You see them out there making sure that debris, when you talk about debris. That has been thrown down and discarded. Once again, we don't have a KFC. But KFC boxes end up in Chester. We don't have a Wendy's. But once again, Wendy's, Chick-fil-A, all these boxes end up in Chester. And they end up in our gutters and our drains. And these people. Are the ones that go out there in the rain and the sun and the cold and the heat to clean up after probably grown folk. They do it. And they try to make it so that there's no flooding in our community. And I want to applaud you for the work that you do each and every day. You're out there, you're visible and you're working. And we thank you. And you're Chester. You're Chester. As far as the the um, project in the um, park. I'm excited. We've been working on this for over two years. Over two years. Myself and members of this council even went out to Philadelphia. We were invited by. Reverend Strand and other and the engineers to go to Philadelphia to see one of these basins. To see how it was, what it did in Philadelphia and and they're all around, they're all around Pennsylvania. That's the bottom line. And we had these conversations uh, with the executive director and with the engineer. We said, we need you to. Shrink it a little bit. We need you to do this. We need you to modify it a little bit. And they did everything that we asked of them. We need to make sure that we're not liable if anything happens that, and they did everything, even answered questions like. You know, what if a child gets in there and, you know, there's a tragedy? Guess what? We have a pool right across the street. Have a pool right across the street that when it closes. We ought to hope and pray that no children get in that pool in the summertime. So I'm excited about it. Um, there were some questions raised. And I want to ask, answer those to to, I want to clarify some things because someone asked, was talking about the lake. It is not a lake. It is not a lake. This is not a lake. It is a stormwater basin. And these are found, like I said before, throughout uh, PA to help alleviate flooding. I'm talking to Reverend Strand, I'm talking to the executive board because I hope that we can go to Upper Darby. They have serious flooding there and I'm going to have a conversation with the mayor. And try to see how we can establish and help them in Upper Darby. I'm sorry, is Darby? Darby, I'm sorry. They have serious flooding problem. A very serious flooding problem and we want to see how we can help. Um, this does not eliminate. Um, this does not eliminate use of our softball fields. Someone said it eliminates the use of, no it doesn't. We sat down, we saw the drawings, all of us. We saw the drawings, we talked to the uh engineer. Matter of fact, nobody used the softball fields last year. Nobody. What my hope is, is that, and I'm gonna be laying on Reverend Strand and the Stormwater Authority, is that maybe we can. Convince them to help us beautify those softball fields so that they would uh match up with the uh, the basin. We'll be talking Reverend Strand. Um, the stormwater basin minimizes the flooding in the area, the businesses, the homes. I don't know if you know it, but those homes in, on, on Bradley Street and on the other side of Bradley Street, Engle Street. Their basements slammed. They slammed. So when those stormwaters come from the township down Engle Street. They rush not only in the park, but they rush into the basements of, of, of these homeowners. That stormwater rushes from the park all, all the way into, to uh Joe, uh Joe's Plumbing. Joe's Plumbing has been here forever and it goes down the street into that automotive uh dealer, right down the street on Fourth Street. This will help eliminate some of that by having this uh stormwater basin in place. We're trying to make life better for those residents and all of our residents in the city. Someone has said, you know, we don't need it. Uh, i- if, if you leave it as is, I've walked past that part, past that park. And seen after a rain, heavy rain, it's enough water in there for a child to drown. It's enough water in there for a child to drown. So having this in place helps for the safety of our kids. And it helps alleviate some of the flooding, most of the flooding in that area for our homes and our businesses. Um, and also our library. Our library gets flooded because of those heavy rains. We need this, this stormwater basin. We desperately need this stormwater basin. Um. Ten million dollars. Not taxpayers, not our taxpayers, city taxpayers' money. Ten million dollars. A grant that they went after. And that's what folks do. They try to get these grants from the state and federal government so that we can do great things here. Ten million dollars for Chester. That's awesome to help us alleviate a problem, just like, just like fifty-five million. I'm telling you, folks are investing. In this community because this community is getting a whole lot better. And I won't sit here and tol- and let, and tolerate folks coming in and saying uh it's Chester that, it's getting a whole lot better. Because no one would invest fifty-five million dollars of their own money into a community that's going downhill. Fifty-five million dollars of their own money to Philadelphia Union. Which means they're here to stay in the City of Chester. Finally, there was a young lady, wow, can't remember her name. She had a um, and, and, and this is why I'm saying this because if, if we don't take advantage of that fifty-five million dollars, that's our fault. And she was part of my fault. It was a young lady, Cheryl. Cheryl. Cheryl had a. Restaurant right here. Used to go to Cheryl's Restaurant, get Cheryl's Chicken, Little Teen Restaurant, right there. And when Philadelphia Union opened up and made an offer and, and encouraged our folks to go down there, Cheryl took the challenge. Cheryl made it. Now she has a huge operation in the Philadelphia Union and beyond in Delaware. Why? Because she's from Chester and she took the challenge. I dare you, I dare you to take the challenge. I dare you to look at that fifty-five million dollars and say. What type of talents do I have? So that I can be a part of this rebirth of this community and benefit financially. You need to say what's in it for you. There's nothing wrong with that. There's nothing wrong with benefiting from that type of investment in our community. So I encourage you all to do so. Um. There's a question about duplication, this is the last one, question about duplication. Why didn't we duplicate? Uh, why didn't the Stormwater duplicate, uh do the same thing they did in Air Park? That they did in, that they wanna do in Chester Park? Well, I, I, I think I can say this on behalf of Stormwater. There is no creek that runs past Memorial Park. There, there is. There is my turn, I didn't interrupt you. Okay. There is no creek. Of that magnitude that runs hot, fast, Air Park. I mean, uh, Memorial Park. And so there has to be a different type of mechanism, different type of um. Build that goes in place. And so. I'm excited. I'm, but, once it is done. The naysayers will see the blessing that has been bestowed upon us because of this project. Thank you and Councilwoman.
I just wanted to bring to your attention, it was brought to my attention last night, that we have a young man in, from Chester. He lives here in Chester and he was on The Voice. His name is Marcelo Groves. That's G R O O V E S. I don't know, it could be Grooves or Groves, but he's from Chester. I watched the clip last night. And um, he got um accolades from John Legend and um other people on the panel that are artists. In the um entertainment field. And this young man, after he's saying Just the Two of Us. And did a wonderful job, he proudly, he couldn't wait to get it out that he was from Chester. Chester, P A. So mayor, I think we need to try to locate this young man and bring him in so everybody can meet him.
Councilman, we've tried, we, uh, Mr., our very own Mr. Amanda Johnson has reached out to the young man.
Okay.
Um, Councilman Morgan, Councilman Morgan and I had a conversation trying to um. Figure out how to get him in here.
Okay.
So we are, we'll, we'll keep on trying to.
Okay, I know you knew.
Drag him in so we can.
I just found out last night and I was very happy.
I watch TV every now and then. It's guarded, I'm starting it.
Good morning, mayor and council.
Good morning.
I just want to say, I guess many of you already know that October is breast cancer month. And this is the last uh Wednesday in the month. And the city does have a billboard of, about breast cancer. Um, thanks to Ro fabricators, no cost to Chester. And just trying to spread the message about breast cancer. And I just want to say that um, women of color. Forty percent of women of color are dying more of breast cancer. So I want to uh, to share the information with uh your families and friends. About the importance of getting a mammogram once a year. If you don't have insurance, just call my office. I would be more than happy to direct you where you can go. And get a free mammogram. So I just wanted to say that's important. Forty percent are more African of women and some men are dying. In comparison to other ethnic groups. That's because, one of the reasons, because we're not going to the doctor. So I wanna encourage you, you may not go to the doctor for breast cancer. You may not go to the doctor because you maybe think you're young, but stick around. You're gonna have to go to the doctor. But what we're here at the Bureau of Health is trying to keep people healthy. And trying to share with you about the importance of taking care of your health. Thank you and God bless you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And I also want to thank the council for holding it down while I was down. Thank you Deputy Mayor, thank you members of council for uh conducting business here in this city. And as always, in a professional manner, respectful manner. Thank you and thank you for your prayers.